Good afternoon, everyone, and I'd like to welcome you and call to order our Middlesex County Council meeting for Tuesday, August the 15th. We acknowledge that the land we stand upon today is the traditional territory of the Atawandarin, Anishinaabe, Haudenosaunee, and Lenape'wak peoples who have longstanding relationships to the land, water, and region of southwestern Ontario. The local First Nation communities of this area include Chipewa of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames First Nation, and Muncie Delaware Nation. We acknowledge the treaties that are specific to this area. Treaty two, the McKee Purchase, treaty three, Between the Lakes Purchase, treaty six, London Township Purchase, treaty twenty-one, Longwoods Purchase, and treaty twenty-nine, the Huron Track Purchase. We value the significant contributions both in the past and present of local and regional First Nations of Turtle Island. We acknowledge her historic and ongoing injustices that Indigenous peoples endure in Canada, and we affirm our commitment to honoring Indigenous voices, nations, and cultures, and to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect. So it is hard to believe that we are now officially in the middle of August, and I'm sure that you are like me, and you ask yourself, where did the summer go? In fact, the Chief Medical Officer of Health and I were just speaking before the meeting, commenting on how the ivy on the building is already starting to change. So that's not a good sign. But with AMO upon us this coming weekend, the leisurely days of summer are becoming fewer and farther between. But I do hope that all of you have had the opportunity to take some time off and to recharge. This was once seen as a luxury, summer holidays, but in my view, it is now a necessity. Recharging is resetting and looking after not only your physical needs, but your mental health needs as well, and probably more importantly, those needs. I have actually scheduled putting my phone and laptop away for a day or two at a time, and I cannot believe the difference it has made as my schedule does tend to fill up. So if you have not done so already, please consider scheduling that time for yourself and put away the cellphone, put away for the laptop, and concentrate on what really is important to you. There is still time to visit all the wonderful places around Middlesex County that count on tourism support, and I have had an opportunity to be out to almost every municipality, and there is no shortage of food, music, fruits and vegetables, and active activities to keep everyone busy. During the pandemic, we focused on staying home and supporting local. Well, that need needs to continue. We need to make sure that we keep it local when we think of supporting our tourism businesses. Celebrate the local businesses in your communities. It's these businesses that make Middlesex the strong and vibrant community that we are. Is there any provision of pecuniary interest? So I actually have to declare one, and this is one for an item that I missed in our January 18th meeting, and I have to declare a pecuniary interest on the Rosewood Plan of Subdivision Phase Two file in Thames Centre, and that is because I have a family member that works for the engineering firm that worked on that file. Is there, okay, now we have just approved the agenda, so if I can get a mover and a seconder to do so, councillor Mayhew and councillor Macmillan, all in favor? And that is carried, and I should just make mention that councillor Maguire, for anybody that is watching us online, is joining us virtually today, and I will make sure that I keep an eye out for him when he would like to participate in the meeting. We have three sets of minutes in front of us for July 18th and July 25th, both open and closed meetings for that meeting, or minutes for that meeting. If I can get a mover and a seconder for the adoption of those minutes, if nothing needs to be amended. Councillor Grantham and councillor Clark, all in favor? And that's carried on to our new business and action items, and the first report is up today is actually from Chief Roberts, and this is an update on our MLPS strategic plan implementation. So if Chief Roberts can make his way to the presentation desk or to one of the seats in the horseshoe. She can sit right up here. Neil? Okay, okay.
Thanks, Madam Warden, and through you to members of council. So the report that is before you today is a follow-up. In the spring of 2022, Middlesex London Paramedic Service underwent a strategic plan review with our consultants of record, ORH. In October 25th to 2022, we presented county council with an overview of the 16 recommendations that were contained in the report. Today's report is to update council on those 16 recommendations and as to where we are and the progress that we're making. So through you, Madam Warden, I'd be happy to take any questions that council may have.
Great, thank you for that. Chief, questions or comments on the report that you've been able to review prior to the meeting? Councillor Grantham?
Yeah, thank you, Warden. Just more of a comment. There's one word in there that scares me, and that's under the Middlesex London Paramedic Service response, bullet point B with the funding for the dedicated offload nursing. I just saw the word "expected," so it's not assured, but I'm assuming the word "expected" just bothered me a little bit.
Chief, did you want to just speak to that? Maybe just give us a review on how that funding is announced?
Thank you, Madam Warden, and through you to the councillors. So the dedicated offload nurse funding is an annual funding envelope that, so it's not a permanent funding envelope, and it is provided by the province. Typically, we have two main funding envelopes. One is for the 911, which is a discretionary grant, and we typically receive that around AMO is often when we do receive that funding envelope. The dedicated offload nurse funding envelope typically comes after our main budget envelope, and that could come, we've had it in the fall of the financial year, we've had it as late as January, February into the following year. So it really, it depends when the ministry and the minister release the funding envelope. We do not expect any changes. We're currently funded 24 hours a day for each site, Victoria Hospital and University, seven days a week, 365. We don't anticipate any change in that, given the current status of our offerings.
Any other questions or comments for the chief on that report? Bill, did you have a, oh, sorry, councillor Rob?
Thank you, through the warden, Neil. I can't find it in here right now, what I've looked up for, but it was, I believe this is the right report about the advanced, how you're going to deploy the advanced paramedics going forward. And if you could speak a little bit to that, we talked about this at the authority, and I think it's worth council hearing that.
So through you, Madam Warden, to councillor Rob, so that would be ORH recommendation four of your report. That talks will consider utilizing advanced care paramedics as solo responders. And so we briefed the Middlesex London Paramedic Services Board recently on this, and it is our intent in probably as early as September of this year to deploy an advanced care paramedic in a single response, so like a Tahoe or an Edge unit that will respond to code four specifically for cardiac arrest unconscious patients, those are what we deem critical patients, to a stop two transport units to go into those calls, return another transport unit back into the system, allow, I would call it a fly car or an immediate response car to determine whether or not the severity of the patient is to start care, especially if it's cardiac arrest, and then await the transporting ambulance to come. So it's a better way of utilizing our resources to try and restore and better improve our responses in the system.
Yeah, thank you. I just think that's an important piece that's being initiated, and it's actually going to save us resources in the future, so.
Thank you for that. Councillor Mayhew?
Thank you, Madam Warden. Neil, in terms of the ambulance collisions, we're up 17% from the previous year. What would be the cause of that? You're obviously, if your patient care rises, the chances of ambulance collision are minor in nature, I realize that, but can you put a handle on what would create that double-digit increase?
So just to give you a quick overview, I certainly, as our call volume increases, so does our risk of these type of incidents. What we're seeing as well as an increase in other drivers that are not yielding to emergency vehicles or not paying attention. Some of the collisions are as a result of our responding to an emergency call, some of the collisions are a result of when we are responding or when we're in traffic, and we're also being hit by other drivers as well. So it's a combination of both, but certainly if council wishes, we can provide in more detail. But as the calls go up, so does the risk, and so do the incidents.
No, thank you very much. I'm satisfied with that. Thank you.
Councillor DeVet?
Thank you, Warden. Through you to the chief. Thank you for the report. There's a lot of content in there again. I just wanted to ask if you've heard any updates or if you have anything to add with respect to item seven, about the more robust planning for workforces and then getting some help with the pilot proposal for the innovative dispatch system and making sure that the people can be dispatched to the right place at the right time, in a timely way without delay. Is there anything, any update there?
So the chief and I have had opportunity to speak with the Chief of Staff from Ministry of Health, and I think coming from that, there'll be some further dialogue. So there's really no update at the moment, but conversation is still continuing. And certainly, I would say to my colleagues around the horseshoe that if you find yourself in a situation at AMO where you've got the ear of not only our local provincial representatives, but anybody from the Ministry of Health, I would, you know, talk to them about dispatch and about the issues facing our region and the importance of the proposal that is in front of them right now.
Okay, any other questions from council? Bill, did you have a couple of comments?
Just maybe a couple. The report that Neil presented will be used. It should be familiar language to you about the investments that we're making in an effort to lower our future costs and to improve service. That's the language that we're going to be using to submit to the city for their four-year budget process. So you'll start seeing that language trickle through, but it wouldn't hurt council to know sort of those. We'll send out, actually, Paul, we'll send out what we're going to be sending over to the city, because those sort of four or five talking points about the investments we're making with the funding and what the challenges are are really helpful and handy, I think, for you to have in conversation. So we'll do that. The other thing is I was really glad to hear Colin bring up the word "expected" and about funding. The reason being, we have a lot of new councillors around the table that have not been through a full cycle with us, and "expected" is something, that word "expected" is a word that Neil and I have lost years of our life over on the land ambulance file, and I want to just highlight it for you, because Neil kind of did, he talked about it, but in greater detail, the whole budget for provincial envelope is expected, and there are times when we lose sight of that, and I'm asking you not to lose sight of that, because one of the reasons we have reserves are that we have to spend a full year's amount before we get an expected amount, that's a grant. Just hear Neil's words correctly, that's a grant. They don't have to give it to you, and we spend their own money. And if that money doesn't come through, then the city and the county have to cover the provincial side. That's the deal. This is not an allocation. It's totally different than other types of funding envelopes that you're probably familiar with. And so you'll hear me talk about reserves at times or why you need to have a little bit of, you know, for roads or for everything. You need this amount as well, because, and then you might say to me, Bill, they've been fairly consistent over the time period. Well, there was a time period where they were talking about having a two-year lag in payment, and any little movement in that expected amount on the 911 side is massive impact on the county budget and also on the city budget. And the warden knows, I've showed her the math, even small percentage points are enough to really move the needle into double digits on tax increases. So I just want you to be aware that this whole budget from, you know, offload delay nurses are actually the smallest piece, but in every other place except for community paramedicine, we're dealing with expected as a consequence, and it's a very nerve-wracking time while Neil and I wait for the number to actually come in. And then the other thing I'd say just a little bit is that at the Authority Board, we asked a similar question as Alan asked in relationship to accidents and year over year, and certainly we were told and know that, I think anecdotally, that just traffic volume is another factor besides call volume. Traffic volumes increased dramatically since the COVID period, and that's, there's just more cars out in the road. You don't have to drive very far to notice that. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. If there aren't any further comments, then I would ask for a mover and a seconder to receive that update regarding our strategic plan for MLPS and receive that for information. Councillor DeVet and councillor Clark, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Okay, sticking with the chief, going to present our 2022 MLPS annual report.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and again, through you to council. So before you today is the 2022 Performance Report covering the work that Middlesex London Paramedic Service has completed in 2022. This is an annual report that we table before county council and is released publicly as well. As you can tell, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge the team at Middlesex London Paramedic Service under Commander Heisey and his team and Deputy Chief Bennett and Commander Dolbear for all the hard work they did in pulling this together. As you can see, there's lots of facts and figures about the service, but at the bottom line is, we had a busy year. We continue to have a busy year, and more importantly, we continue to serve the patients and residents of the service area that we cover. So I'll leave it there, Madam Warden, and turn it back to you for questions from county council.
Great, thank you very much for that, Neil. I would echo the thanks to you and your team for putting this annual report together. For new councillors, this is obviously something that comes to us every year, and it's quite a dynamic document, because it really does tell the history of what what MLPS does in a year, and it's important not only for us, but for those that we serve. And there's a lot of information, as Neil said. I hope that you've taken the time to really go through it, but again, congratulations to your team on what they put together. Questions or comments on the annual report? Councillor Grantham?
Thank you, Warden. I echo your sentiments regarding the quality of the report. I passed that on to Chief Roberts last night. Fantastic report. I love KPIs, the one that I'd never seen before, chief, was the unit cost per hour. And I'm just curious, how would that relate to the year previous? Was it up or down? That's a great KPI.
I believe just by doing normal math, we would have gone up slightly just because of the pressures, and certainly our budget would have gone up each year. So as a result, but as we've indicated in the past, and I know CAO Rayburn has indicated, we operate fairly lean with regards to some of our other comparators, but certainly we're not at the KPIs, especially it used to be called the Ontario Municipal Benchmarking Institute, but it's now a federal, and I apologize, I'm not sure of the acronym, but we are compared against other paramedic services in Waterloo, Ottawa, Winnipeg, and so on and so forth, and Middlesex London has been always one of the lowest costing systems in our comparators. So I can get you the exact figure on it, but I will venture to say that we are more than we were in the prior year, just based upon our budget, but also the demands on our system have dramatically grown as well.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you, chief.
Councillor DeVet?
Thank you, Warden. Through you to the chief. Thanks again for this report. I always look forward to seeing it. There's always a lot of good content in here. I noticed one difference this time, and that was, we quite often talk about the service agreement, well, the agreement between boundary municipalities, and I was always aware that this is the cost, this is the bill, this is the kind of money that we've had support from them. This is the first time I see how often we have in turn helped our neighbors. So it just shows the systems working well to support each other when things are rough, I guess, they get rough everywhere sometimes, and we're working together to make sure our residents or our residents and residents on the other side of the boundary are giving service to me, so thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any just comment on that?
Maybe just a little bit of an update, Neil, on how cross-border billing works or it doesn't?
It does not exist. If some council members may recall that in the last term of council, there was a decision made not to continue with the cross-border billing. However, that does not negate the need when there is a code for in a neighboring community, and we are the closest unit or another county is the closest unit, they are required under legislature to, or legislation to respond, and they do. So what you're seeing, councillor DeVet, is that going back and forth. We call it seamless. And really, at the end of the day, it's our mutual aid, and so we will respond when we need, as will our neighbors. But certainly, we're trying to do everything we can to avoid calling our neighbors into Middlesex and the city of London.
Thank you for that update. Any other comments or questions from council? Okay, with that, I would ask for a mover and a seconder to receive the annual report for information, then please. Councillor Robb and councillor Brennan, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Any inquiries? Any notices of motion? Okay, any councillor comments? Councillor Brennan?
Yeah, since we've been dealing with the paramedic service, I'd just like to say that I went for a ride along a couple of weeks ago, and it's very interesting. I would suggest any council that hasn't been on one to go on one. You get to see all the ins and outs and what everybody does. It was a very enjoyable day for me. We didn't have a lot of calls, but it was a good day, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. So to Chief Roberts, I thank your staff for tolerating me for the day. Thank you.
That's right. Thanks for that, councillor Brennan. Any other councillor comments? Okay, we'll move into the committee of the whole, and I would ask for a mover and a seconder to do that at 23 minutes after one, please. Councillor Clark and councillor Macmillan, all in favor? And that's carried. So we do have a delegation joining us today, and I'm really pleased to welcome in person our friends from the Middlesex London Health Unit, and joining us today are Dr. Alex Summers, Donna Cosmac, and Warren Dowlin. And they're going to bring us an update on exciting new build or new, I guess, new offices in Strathroy, but new seniors dental program that we know is so needed in our communities. So welcome. It's great to have you in person, and I'll turn it over to you.
And it's wonderful to be here in person, Madam Warden, through you to county council. Hello, and thank you for having us. My name is Alex Summers. I'm medical officer of health at the Middlesex London Health Unit. I'm joined today by Warren Dowlin, who's our manager of operations and procurement at the health unit, and Donna Cosmac, who's the manager of our oral health program. We're here today with a good news story around expansion of dental services in counties, specifically in Strathroy Caredoc. We can move to the next slide. Public health does many, many things. For those of you who sit on our board, you know this, and for those of you who've been aware of our work in the last little while, you know this as well. Part of that is provide a wide variety of oral health services. Under the Ontario Public Health Standards, we provide oral screening, assessment, and surveillance, particularly for school-aged children. We then offer services through a program called Healthy Smiles Ontario in order to support children who have clinical need but don't have the financial need, eligibility to have the care that they require. We also monitor water fluoridation levels in our community, because we know that that's a critical intervention to prevent oral cavities and the decline in oral health. And recently, at least in the last five years, we've also offered services through the new Ontario Seniors Dental Care Program, which provides dental services to low-income seniors. Oral health is health, and we know the importance of a healthy smile, not only for physical health and reducing infections and other things, but also for mental health as well, and we're really privileged to be able to support that work. Part of our work is screening school-aged children and ensuring that they get the assessment for their dental needs as required. And there is need certainly in the city, but in the county, and as you look at the screen, you'll see our most recent rates when we've done screening in elementary school students, predominantly in grade two, but in a few other grades as well. We see a significant number of children who need some degree of preventive services, be them cleaning or sealants, as well as children requiring urgent care, like fillings or addressing an infection. The need is there, certainly for children, and as you'll hear, also for seniors. The Ontario Seniors Dental Program, which Donna will speak to in a moment later on in the presentation, is a new program that does, as I mentioned, provide oral health services to low-income seniors. That program started just a few years ago, and so we've really tried to get things going through the pandemic. It's been a journey, to say the least. But in order to support that program, we received some capital funding from the Ministry of Health in order to expand clinical services in the county and specifically at the shops on Sidham located in Strathroy. So after many years of navigating, waiting on capital funding and all that type of stuff, we, with great excitement, opened up a new Strathroy dental clinic on June 26, 2023, primarily to provide services to those children requiring services through Healthy Smiles on Ontario, but notably to seniors who qualify for the Ontario Seniors Dental Care Program and are over the age of 65. I'm going to pass things over to Warren, who's going to talk and walk us through the process by which this clinic came to reality.
Through you, Madam Chair and county councillors. You'll see before you collage of construction photos. We started off taking over a old retail unit in what was formerly known as the Kenwick Mall for some. We had to trench through the floor to bury all the plumbing and electrical for all the operatories, and it's a full-service standalone clinic with four operatories, sterilization rooms, public and staff bathrooms, storage, work areas, offices, kitchen. It's a self-contained dental clinic. Next slide, please. So we'd like to recognize and thank some of the partners that helped us make this happen. Of course, the funding came from the Ontario Ministry of Health. We partnered through RFP with CCS Construction Group at a Tecumseh. They're a full-service construction provider for us. Henry Shine was the awarded supplier for the dental equipment and supplies. The municipality of Strathroy Caredoc worked well with us on permits and inspections to keep our timelines in check. And of course, we worked with the landlord at the, what's now called the Shops on Sidham. Next slide, please. So it all came together at a grand opening event on June 26. You might recognize some of the faces in these photos. We had representatives from our staff, local and provincial government, some of the other construction people. So it was a solid team that came together. We worked well and got the project done on time and on budget. Next slide, please. So here's what the outside of the unit looks like now, which is actually inside the mall, so it's within the mall in Strathroy. We are going to be taking you on a quick tour, and I will be passing over to Donna Cosmac now.
Hi, my name is Ashley. I'm a dental assistant on the oral health team.
And my name is Kelly. I'm a registered dental hygienist with the oral health team. And we are going to show you around our Strathroy Dental Clinic, where we will be seeing seniors and children under eighteen through the Ontario Seniors Dental Care Program and the Healthy Smiles Program. Come with us for a tour. So this here is our waiting room for our patients to feel comfortable in with a wheelchair-accessible bathroom in the back. And up here, we have a lovely team member that welcomes our patients in and checks them in and makes sure everything is going good. So we're going to take you for a tour inside our clinic. So first off, we have our manager's office. Next up over here, we have our dentist's office. Hi, Dr. Steph. And down here, this is one of our X-ray machines. It's the panoramic X-ray that we take. Next up, we have our sterilization area. This is where all of our dental instruments are sterilized by a designated team member. So it's a one-way workflow. It starts out with dirty and moves into clean. And then the sterilized instruments are placed in this cupboard, which is accessed from the outside hall. Next up, we're going to show you our dental operatories. So there are four rooms altogether. They are all the same. Come on in. Like Kelly said, one of the four operatories that we have here that are all the same. In here, you will see patients getting cleanings done, fillings, extractions, root canals, you name it. Here you'll find our ABW area where staff is working when we're not seeing patients. I'm Maggie and Ruth, working hard. And then next door, we have our kitchen. And last up on our tour is our staff room, our locker area, lockers and staff washroom and staff change room. And then this leads to the back parking lot where staff will be able to enter and exit. Thanks for coming along on a tour of our new dental clinic. We're so excited to start welcoming patients here. Bye.
Right through you, Madam Warden. That was a lovely video put together by two of our team members at the Healthy Unit. So I hope you enjoyed your little virtual tour through our clinic. Next slide. Oh, I don't want to watch it again. So we've touched on this a bit briefly, but what happens at the Strathroy Clinic? As Dr. Summer said, we do see children through the Healthy Smiles Program. But the clinic was built to address our waitlist with the Ontario Seniors Dental Care Program. We have approximately six hundred and fifty people on our waitlist right now for care. Most of which actually live in London, but obviously some are from the county as well. So we are now seeing people from London go out to the county for service, which is an interesting twist. So the clinic has a full-time dentist, and on an average day, we'll have approximately three hygienists working in the clinic and dental assistants. So of the four operatories, three will be used for hygiene and one for treatment with the dentist. We, the seniors program offers a very wide range of services. As you heard on that video, from root canals to fillings, extractions. And also we provide dentures as well to individuals in need. Uh, next slide. This is a visual depiction of our team. We are a growing team. So this was updated as of last week, but we had a new team member join this week. So she's missing from the sides. We are currently recruiting a few more team members to be able to come up to full capacity with the opening of the clinic. We obviously needed more staff, and there is a shortage of dental assistants Canada-wide. So if anyone knows of the dental assistant, let them know we're hiring. It is a tricky, tricky thing to do. Next slide. So this slide just demonstrates the importance of the seniors program. Dental, as Dr. Summer said, oral health is health, but for seniors, it can be even more important. And a lot of the time, with a fixed income, our seniors population, you know, without benefits as well when retirement hits. Do not receive dental care. So we are therefore. There we go. So who is eligible? So seniors and for this program is defined as individual sixty-five years of age or older with an annual income of twenty-two thousand for someone who is single or thirty-seven thousand for a couple. And they would have no access to other health benefits. So that is a lower threshold. You might be wondering how the federal program will fit into this. So are we. So the federal program was announced at around ninety thousand. So we'll see what that brings. We don't know yet. But that is a substantial increase from what our Ontario program is funded at. And then I have covered what services are covered under the program already. So next slide, please.
Okay, I think we need to take a bit of a recess. For those watching, we've had a unauthorized visitor join our gallery, and it is a bat. So if we could just take a five-minute recess with Counselor Brennan and Counselor Devit. Motioning that, all in favor?